And one. It's the free hoop shoot contest. And finally, finally, this Sunday afternoon between two to four, the Elks Kids Halloween Party will take place at the Elks Hall on Social Street. Just want to get as many kids as possible to come. Wear costume, the people there will be in costume. We'll have treats, we'll have prizes, we'll have food. It's free, free, free. So hopefully, hopefully we'll get a lot of kids to come. I've been able to talk about it with a lot of the schools. So this is just another way to announce it and get the children to come. So, great weekend coming up, a lot of Halloween programs and a lot of kid programs. So hopefully, we can get some good attendance. I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee?
Hi, I'm Michelle Stabor, 139 Ray Avenue. And in line with what Mr. Burke did, during Autumn Fest, I made it my mission to find out what was good going on in the city because we wanted to highlight that. And besides what Mr. Burke highlighted, we have a trunk or treat on the 26th that's being given by Post 85. And that'll be 4:30 to 7 o'clock. And then in the Parks and Recreations on October 25th, there's a spectacular Halloween dance party and movie in the park. And I'm trying to see if I can see which park it is. I can't see it, I'm sorry. But if you look it up on the Parks and Recreation. So I know sometimes there's a lot of complaints that there's not good things going on for our kids. And there's a lot of wonderful things going on for our kids and a lot of wonderful things going on in the schools. And I want to thank you for all what you do.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the school committee this evening? Seeing, hearing none, we'll go into recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the school committee, I am pleased to announce that the Pothier Citizens Campus has been selected as a Stop &amp; Shop School Food Pantry Program Partner. Stop &amp; Shop has provided the campus with a donation of $10,000. Yes, $10,000 in Stop &amp; Shop gift cards to purchase items to stock their food pantry. In addition, they donated 100 reusable bags, guides on the best way to stock a pantry, and ideas for families on how to create healthy meals. The Bellingham Store will be their partner store and will be holding a small ceremony rebranding the pantry as the Eagles Nest. All of this was made possible due to the hard work and efforts of our parent liaisons, Kim Hatcher and Bonnie Rondo, who contacted the company after applying for a grant last spring. This is an amazing opportunity for the campus staff to ensure food is more accessible to our students and their families who are most in need. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my recognitions and announcements this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Next, I'll go into the approval of minutes and I'll make a motion to approve the October 9th, 2024 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any corrections to the minutes? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Place Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Anyone who want to take any item out of the consent agenda to discuss individually? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Place Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
We will not have a report from the student representative this evening. Next, we'll go into instructional empowerment case study presentation. Dr. Holt?
Thank you, Chairman. The students and I would like to ask for the school committee members to please come off the stage. We have a presentation and students here for discussion. So if you wouldn't mind coming off the stage and coming to our students.
Sure.
Yeah, they'll be over there. Huh? Oh, I forgot my... We'll go there, yeah. I'm just waiting for Lynn to come down. It's okay, I got you. I got you. We will be. Okay, thank you so very much, school committee, for coming down. They'll come over in just one second to the tables where our students are. But before you transition to where our students are, I just want to take a few minutes to go through just a couple of slides to bring you into the conversation about our model of instruction that we've been working on for quite a few years. This symbol or this picture that you see depicted up on the screen should be familiar to you. We've been using this in our district for the last three years. We have a partnership with Instructional Empowerment. It's a national organization that does research with some of the most prominent researchers in education today, including Robert Morzano, if anyone's familiar with him. He's one of their co-founders. He is a very prominent researcher in education. We've been partnering, we've been very lucky in this district to partner with Instructional Empowerment. And thinking through the four levers that you see here. All four of these levers are needed in order for really great instruction and learning to take place in our classrooms. The first one you see is S E C L. That stands for social emotional cognitive learning. So it's looking at our social emotional well-being, but also through the lens of our math class, our PE class, our reading class. It's all embedded within our cognitive learning. The second one you see that some of you might be familiar to you, we call him Chat Stanley in the district here. He is representing academic discourse. That's where we have students engaging in conversations, which you're going to get to experience in just a minute with some of our students for a specific conversation. The third one is standards-based or instruction that is target task aligned. So we're looking at the standards and ensuring the rigor is happening in the classrooms. And then the last one is assessments. That's just checking in and seeing, hey, how are we doing with the standards we just talked about? Are we reaching those standards? How am I, as a student, doing towards that target? So, before I move from this slide, I want to let you know... Actually, I'm going to move, but I think I'm going the wrong way. There we go. Want to let you know that the students we have here, we have Mina Antunes. Mina? We have Jalissa Torres. We have Andy Cooper. Autumn Trudeau. And Josiah Ortiz. These amazing students that you see over to the side here were involved in a case study and were interviewed by the members of Instructional Empowerment last school year to ask them their opinion and thoughts about how the model of instruction is working in our classrooms. They did such an amazing job representing the One Socket Education Department that their videos and pictures and words and comments were showcased during the national conference last June. It was exciting to be in the audience of, I think it was about 12,000 teachers. It was a lot. And it was very exciting to be in the audience, seeing our students up on the screen talking about their learning experience here in One Socket. It was amazing. Give it a round. We are super thrilled to share with you, hot off the press, the case study that is now nationally published of how One Socket is taking academic discourse and changing from a quiet classrooms to classrooms with dynamic discourse. Absolutely phenomenal. We're included in the... This actually is about One Socket. It's not just us being included in the case study. This is all about us and our partnership with IE. My vision is really bad, so I can't see the bullets. I can't see from here to there. Empowered academic performance. Enhanced communication skills. I'm going to move up. Increased student engagement and positive impact on the families and community. One of the things that we were really fortunate to have at one of our curriculum subcommittees is a group of parents also come in and talk about their child's experience with the model of instruction. And we had one father tell us that when he was driving down the road, his son said to him, or his child said to him, "Dad, I respectfully disagree." And he said, "I almost had to drive off the road and stop to have a further conversation." So it was pretty exciting. So those are the key findings from the study, which all of our members of the school committee, you will be getting a copy of the published study today. Yay! We're going to have this video go on in just a minute, and I don't know how to make it not go just yet. Thank you. At this time, we're going to have the video playing in the back so the audience at home will hear something going on. But we're going to ask our school committee members to go on over to our students. They have some questions for you to ask them about their experience in the case study with Instructional Empowerment. So I'm going to hand it over to the students, if you wouldn't mind going over to them.
Amy's new trick. Here's the trick. Let's get it right here.
Christ. Why'd you take your phone away like I took Lisa's phone away once we had lunch? I told you that.
Yeah, you did.
Take your phone away.
On my place.
You can make it your place. I will not object. Matter of fact, I laughed. That was wonderful.
Yeah, that was good.
Wonderful.
You gave the fun away.
Up comes the screen.
Look at that, I did half my notes already.
You're right. This is going to take time.
Oh, you took the fun away.
I know, I could have stayed there all night.
That was awesome.
Yep.
I enjoyed it.
Yes, yes.
So Lynn?
Yeah, we've got to wait for her and I.
Where is she? Okay, I'll tell her. You're on your way. You're on your way. Are you staying there?
Yeah, I think I'm...
You are?
I might tell a few jokes, you know, I don't know.
Dr. McGee, are you going to be engaging with us, is that it?
I might, yeah, I might.
Want the notes?
You're wondering, what am I going to do here? No, I just wanted to, before we resume with the rest of the agenda, I just wanted to thank these amazing One Socket High School students. Let's put our hands together.
Good job.
I am and we are so proud of the students here this evening and all of our students at One Socket High School. I also want to thank, where is Mrs. Zinni? She just left, story of my life. So I wanted, she just left with Morgan Zinni. Mrs. Zinni is high school ELA teacher. And these students here are Mrs. Zinni's students. So I want to thank her for all the wonderful work that she does with these truly talented students. So thank Mrs. Zinni. And I also want to thank our specialists here, our innovation specialists, who have been... Um, and I also want to thank our, um, our specialists here, our innovation specialists, who have been working very hard for the last two, and almost a half years. This year's flying by. Uh, they're, they've done a tremendous, um, job and a tremendous amount of work here in the district. Um, they're working very closely with, obviously, our students, they're working very closely with our teachers, and they're working very closely with our administrators, our principals and our assistant principals. So let's, let's put our hands together for our innovation specialists. If, if they, if they wouldn't mind all standing, uh, so we can see who they are. But thank you, yes, again, thank you so much. And we continue to, uh, to focus on the model of instruction, um, as, as we all know, and I've said this many times, and Dr. Holt has said this. Uh, the model of instruction is not an initiative, the model of instruction is how we teach here in the Windsocket Education Department. So we've already seen some tremendous, uh, gains from our students, and, uh, we're gonna continue the good work, so thank you very much.
Super, super.
Thank you, Glenn.
Dr. McGee, I'll ask you to give us your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. You have here, uh, an updated... Just pull this up for one second. Uh, you have an updated, um, staffing, uh, changes, um, list here, which lists the certified positions that we filled. Uh, just to give the, the committee the, um, the updated numbers of vacant positions in the district. We have seventeen paraprofessional positions that are still vacant. However, there are, um, ten interviews that are scheduled over the next week or so, I believe, or a few days. So hopefully that, um, seventeen will, will go down to seven. Uh, we have two custodial positions that are, that are vacant, uh, one secretary position, seven teaching positions. Um, of those seven, five of those seven are classroom, uh, teaching positions, and, um, one is a psychologist and one is a social worker. So, um, so it's actually five classroom teachers, but seven, um, of those positions are still vacant. And we're, as, as we've been doing since, um, summer, we're working very hard to try to fill those positions as quickly as we possibly can. With that, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions any members of the committee might have at this time.
Any questions or comments? Then I'll make a motion, receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Do we, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc, Mrs. Costa, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I failed to ask for motion to receive and place on file the instructional empowerment case study, so I'll make that motion now. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
School committee, sub, a subcommittee reports. Uh, Mr. Notorianni, would you give us the update for the building committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the building committee met on Friday, October eighteenth at nine AM. We reviewed the minutes of the prior meeting. We, we, um, approved, um, three of the potential bids for, um, subcontractors for the new school elementary project. We reviewed the budget format and had a budget projection update from the Downs Construction, which is our own as project manager. Um, the committee approved payments for the OPM, for invoice for OPM services, for design build services to Daniel O'Connell and to Yankee Sprinkler for hydrant flow testing. We reviewed the groundbreaking ceremony location logistics. We're pending, um, a final date when we'll have the groundbreaking, um, with, uh, the governor's office. We reviewed the master schedule update in terms of where we are with the project and our future progress, projections in terms of dates. We reviewed the project sign approval. Uh, we had a discussion about the elevation and location of the new elementary school at Barryfield. We had a brief update about Cass Park and how the Cass Park project aligns with the Barryfield construction. And the last item was, uh, potential schedule for the school building committee for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and that concluded the, the agenda.
Mr. Notorianni, do we have a date yet for the groundbreaking? I know that was something that they were gonna get back to us from the governor's office, any, any news on that?
So we propose technically the fourteenth and fifteenth of November. We are waiting, Ride is now taking the lead in coordinating with the governor's office and the Department of Transportation. So the quick answer is no, we don't have a set date. It's pending the governor's confirmation, but we propose the fourteenth and the fifteenth.
And it looks like there's gonna be quite a few invitees to the groundbreaking with a, it seems like several speakers at this, uh, at, at the groundbreaking. Just the way the layout, the number of chairs, et cetera. I mean, it looks like we'll be there all day.
I, I believe so, we have several speakers. Our own Dr. Patrick, he's superintendent, is gonna be the master of ceremonies, I believe. And, and, and yes, I believe we're gonna hear from many public officials.
It's your piece I want, Alan. No, so that's still, that's still, it's still where we are.
That is where we are, Chairman.
Okay. Any additional thoughts for Mr. Notorianni on the building? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the building committee update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc, Mrs. Costa, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Notorianni, back to you. Would you, uh, give us the facility security update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The school facility safety and security subcommittee met on Friday, October eighteenth at ten AM. Uh, first item was a consideration to approve the minutes of July seventeenth. The next item was a discussion on the Windsocket High School gymnasium and locker rooms update in terms of where we are with those two projects that need to be substantially completed by the, um, December thirty-first deadline with Ride. Next item for discussion was a proposed mural, um, at the Portia Citizens Campus. There was just a review of the, the actual mural, and that will be installed hopefully, um, in the next few weeks before the cold weather, um, hits us. The fourth item was a discussion on an Eagle Scout project here at Hamlet Middle School. And as you exit the meeting this evening, if you just look to your left, if you go out the rear entrance, you'll see that the project has been completed. They installed new mulch, picnic tables and some shrubbery. It looks, it looks very, very nice. The last item was a discussion with Durham and presentation from Durham School Services regarding what is currently occurring with our transportation. Um, some potential solutions that'll be brought back to the committee at a future date, along with, um, a proposed, um, plan to mitigate some of the, uh, the issues we're experiencing. So.
Since that meeting, is Durham picking up all our kids? Because we've had some buses with six when they should've had nearly forty. I mean, how is that going right now?
As far as I am aware, I've not been in the way to wear of any, any substantial issues such as that as of, as of, as of today. There was a field trip snafu today at the high school that did get reported. Apparently something went wrong with the schedule, and they had to do a little course correction, but I believe the students were picked up a little later than anticipated. That, that's the only thing reported to me as of, um, as of today, right now. I believe Mr. Dumont is full-time here and with us here in Windsocket, my sources tell me.
I have been going there to check, to make sure he's there every day on my route, and so far, so good. The only day he was not there was when Al took him, I guess.
Is that your report?
Yeah, that concludes my report, Chairman.
Any questions from?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Burke.
Thank you. Uh, I, I kinda missed, um, at the beginning, you said there's work being done on the locker rooms in the high school.
Yes, Mr.
Gym? Is the gym closed?
Yes, Mr. Burke, so we are, um, at the tail end of the project. Over the summer, we, um, we completely, um, we painted the entire gymnasium, we replaced the bleachers, the windows, um, and then they restarted resurfacing the floor. And then the process of resurfacing the floor discovered that there was some water damage underneath a couple of sections of it from a, a prior leak that occurred, I guess, my understanding is years ago. And, um, our wooden floor is, um, it's older, and it's actually of high quality. And the wood to replace the damaged spaces had to be, um, obtained through Canada and specially milled. And then it's being shipped to us this week, and then it'll be installed in about a week and a half.
Now, will the, uh, the, the basketball teams be able to use the gym this, this season?
Yes, so we've accounted for the, the basketball schedule. Mr. Giadano is aware, um, our athletic director is aware of the fact that, that we will probably not open for a couple more weeks. And Mr. Giadano and I are in contact regularly to make sure that, that there's open communication, but, but yes, they were aware.
Decided where the teams are gonna play?
So if the gym is not available for that first week of the season, second week of the season, getting into it, um, they've made arrangements to, um, use, to use the Hamlet Middle School or Villanova Middle School. I believe some of the other options, they maybe have altered the schedule where we've gone to as visitors first versus having home games here to accommodate that. But, uh, Mr. Giadano has not indicated there's been any substantial impact that I'm aware of, unless, Dr. McGee, you've heard anything. And then on the, um, boy's side of the, the locker room, we're converting that to a boys and girls locker room, completely renovated and new. The permit was submitted to the city last evening. The building official and fire marshal have already been out to inspect, and they're quite pleased with our proposal. And on the girl's side, we're going to in-house to save money because we, we don't have money. The facilities department is gonna go in and, um, completely gut the girl's side and turn it into, um, a workout room, weight room for us, so that we have a viable option for, in the school, for, when we're doing sports in school.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Kepiscus?
I'm gonna ask with regard to Durham, but can I direct my question to Ms. Morell? Your face was very telling. Are there still issues in special education with busing?
Um, I know that Mr. Notorianni has been working very diligently to help support all of the students with them getting picked up on time, and then working with the afternoon, um, to make sure that Little Park is not getting picked up as late. Um, because we do have some special needs students that have afternoon feeds, um, and when the buses come late, that will prolong their feeding. So I know he's working diligently with the bus company. Um, I know that I am, um, attending a meeting with him to, to take a look at all of that information of the students that are on our medically fragile buses, um, to make sure that the students that are on the buses need to be on those buses. Um, and if we need to make it, uh, changes and, um, adjustments, we will.
Ms. Kepiscus, any follow-up that? No, they, they stink, their service is awful with the medically fragile students right now. And one of the proposals will be coming forward that we discussed at the subcommittee is to add an additional medically fragile bus, which will be an additional cost to the district. But they've assured us, and, um, I wouldn't bank on it, um, that this third bus is gonna mitigate and alleviate any of the, um, issues that we're experiencing. Well, I appreciate my colleagues, uh, reference to me working diligently on this. While I ain't working diligently on it, they stink, and I don't trust anything they're doing.
Thank you.
Hopefully the addition of that bus, if we can find the money and Durham can provide the drivers, et cetera, will alleviate some of those problems. But like you said, it's hard to believe anything they do.
I usually say I'm hopeful, but I've said that a lot about them. I will say that we will be starting next week, meeting with each individual principal to review the routes and the bus stops, to see if there's any circumstances where what they've designed over the summer is impeding, uh, any progress. And Mrs. Morell is correct, there will be a meeting with her and Mrs. Gerard to, uh, to go over the medically fragile routes, to see what we can do to mitigate those issues.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the, uh, facility security safety committee update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Morell, would you give us your report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so in front of you is the, um, special education enrollment numbers, the snapshot as of October eighteenth. Um, right now, we have a total of one thousand four hundred and five students within our buildings pre-K through twelve. Um, our number has, has risen, um, slightly. Um, it represents twenty-six point four percent of our population, um, receiving special education services. Um, we also have twenty-three students in our transport program right now, um, a hundred and twenty-one students in our out-of-district placements with a hundred and fourteen of them with IAPs. And then we have a hundred and fifty-seven students in private schools and pre-K receiving services out in the community. Through the last few weeks, we've had, um, an influx of students that have moved in, um, with special ed services. Um, some of them were already in out-of-district placements, um, so that has, um, that number has, has grown, um, by like five or six students, but out-of-district placements are costly, um, so that number has gone up a little bit.
When we say we have a hundred and fifty-seven in private schools, which schools are those?
So it's private schools and pre-K together, so the start, uh, students that we service at Moncina Gattery, um, Moncina Gattery, Good Shepherd, um, Mount St. Charles, as well as all the head stop programs out in the community.
Can you tell me, again, I'm, I'm sure you've said this a million times, why are we servicing students that really belong to Mount or go to Mount? Why aren't, why isn't Mount taking care of that?
So the students is, the students that are at Mount St. Charles, if they're Windsocket students, um, and there is a question of a disability, they come back to their, um, home districts, um, for testing and services. Sometimes, um, we do the evaluations, we find a student either eligible or not eligible. If they're eligible, Mount does have their own, um, student support service that they provide there, um, and they take on the services. But if they require speech or occupational therapy or anything like that, that is something that we do have to provide.
Isn't this, we may be providing it or making, making it happen, but are we funded by Mount? It seems to me it's their student. Like, if it's a Windsocket student, Windsocket High student, Windsocket, our, our kids, we're paying for all of it, and, and we're taking care of it. I'm wondering why the private school, if, if, if they're not, why aren't they paying for those services? I, I don't know, I, that's why I'm asking.
It's, it's, okay.
Is funding coming from the Federals for this?
Yes, there's, there's a membership of the IDEA, but it's not a significant portion of the, each district is afforded a certain... Through my IDEA grant, there's, uh, a certain amount of funds that I have to provide for sort, services to, um, the private schools, the private Catholic schools in the city. Um, so at Moncina Gattery and Good Shepherd, we do have a resource teacher that provides some services there. We have a speech pathologist that goes there, and we have an occupational therapist that goes there a couple times throughout the week. Right now at Mount St. Charles, we don't have many students there, but if there was a student that, um, they needed, um, testing for, we would provide, um, the, the testing.
You don't have any students in Moncina Gattery, do you?
Well, it's Moncina, it's Good Shepherd.
It's the, it's, it's St. Joseph's, basically, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We go to them.
Okay. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Notorianni, um, Ms. Morell, will you complete, or are you, you going on?
Nope, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Any questions for her? Ms. Kepiscus?
Just a comment, um, not to belabor the point, but wherever they attend, they're still our students.
I understand that.
Under IDEA, they remain our responsibility, fiscally or otherwise.
See, that's what doesn't make sense to me, because if a child goes, is, is decided, or the parents have decided to put, place that child in Mount, I would, it is our students, our, it's our citizen, let's put it that way, but their student belongs to Mount. And I would've thought that Mount would have to pay it all.
Flip it the other way.
Okay.
We are getting the funding for that student under IDEA. Why should we not be forced to use that funding to provide the services at Mount and Good Shepherd?
I would agree if all of it, I mean, I, whatever we get, then it should be all covered. I mean, we're not being fully covered, right, Sarah? That's my point, it's...
It depends on what the services are. So, um, we do provide, if they are, if they are eligible for services, we do have to write an IAP for them, and we would have to meet on it every, um, year to update it. However, um, every, depending on what the services are, if they have resource support, they have their own resource, um, uh, student support system at Mount, that they pick up the resource students and they provide the services. We don't provide that service, but we would provide the speech and OT because they don't have a speech or occupational therapist on staff.
Here.
It is, so it's, the situation, it's not a common practice. It's a very difficult formula. However, if, if a student from Cumberland is at Good Shepherd and Montsini Gattery, Good Shepherd, sorry, and they have an IEP, because we have service providers that provide service there, we have to provide a service plan to those students, if they're not one socket students, for up to so much service time throughout the year. And then once that money is gone, then they have to go back to their sending school for the services. So we do provide that, we have to provide that support to the students there.
Somehow, that doesn't make any sense to me.
At all.
A Cumberland student, Cumberland resident comes here?
Just like the students at Mercy Mount, if we have students at Mercy Mount, they provide, Cumberland will provide a service plan for the students with IEPs at Mercy Mount that are one socket students.
Okay. Okay. Mercy Mount's a good example.
Yep.
In that community.
Yep.
Interesting. Okay. Yeah, I don't argue the fact they're not our students, it's just where the funding comes from. You know, if. Right. But it's not much. It doesn't cover all the money, all the costs.
So we have a handful of students at Good Shepherd, so it makes sense for us to provide a service provider to go there for a couple hours a week to provide the services versus them coming before school or after school or extending the day or anything like that. However, if it goes down, if, if the need should decrease and there's only one student there, then, you know, we would take a look at that and maybe change the way we service it.
Got it.
Where does the rest of the funding come from if it doesn't cover the whole cost?
So the students, so the students that come from.
It's got to be here.
The students that come from different districts, once the money runs out, they have to go back to Cumberland, or go back to North Smithfield, or wherever their home school is, to get the special education services. But for our students, we have to support them just like they were in our schools. They wouldn't have the type of supports that we have in our schools because they don't have like a self-contained classroom, they don't have like some of the things that we provide in our district. They may not have that at their location, but we would provide resource support in reading, writing, and math. We would provide OT, speech.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Kapiskas, oh, Vice Chair Burke, who's first?
What is our responsibility in a similar way with Rise Prep?
Rise Prep is a charter school, and they have their own special education program. So when they go to Rise Prep, they are now their student. They're not, they're, they're not one socket stu, they are one socket students if they live in the city, but because Rise Prep is a charter, same thing with Beacon and Founders, because they're charter schools and they have their own special education department, that we're not, they're not on our census, they're on their own census and everything.
So if a student needs some occupational therapy?
They get it there.
They do it there.
Yep.
Until the student comes back here for whatever.
Which, if you had many.
Ms. Kapiskas?
With regard to a lot of those privates, though, you're going to find they're not going to keep students with an IEP. They don't have to. Mercy Mount, for example, personal experience, will not keep a child with an IEP. My son was there 21 days.
So they're going to, he would come back there?
Bouncing them.
Yeah.
Absolutely bouncing them. Yep.
To keep them.
Which is why you're not going to see a lot of kids from One Socket, besides the cost.
Right.
You're not going to see a lot of kids in those situations because they will bounce them. Mount is a little better in keeping kids. Good Shepherd is much better in keeping kids because they're not private, their parochial is the difference.
And why do, why do they bounce them like that?
They're costly.
It's the money.
It's unbelievable.
And they also find them to be disruptive, depending on what their particular needs are.
Right.
A lot of students who have IEPs that have ADHD, autism, they're disruptive. They're, they're just disruptive or mental health dysregulation. Those students can be disruptive in a classroom, and a parent's not going to say, "I'm not paying $12,000," is going to say, "I'm not paying $12,000 for my child to attend Mercy Mount or Mount St. Charles to be disrupted by him." So they're going to make a choice that him has to leave so they can continue to collect the $12,000 or 20 probably by now from everybody in the room.
Oh, that's crazy.
That's the honest God truth. Done there, done that.
And we've seen it, kids coming back. Any other questions for Ms. Morell? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a special education update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's go on to new business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the amendments on a non-union benefits policy. Do we have, do we have a second for discussion only?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Ms. Costa. This item, we need financial impacts on, on, on this particular item. And since we do not have that this evening, I'll make a motion to table this item to provide Mr. Perrier to give us the information, and we'll, I'd like to table it to November 6th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Ms. Leclerc. Any discussion? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the amendments to the Title IX policy. Do we have a second for discussion only?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. This item also, we need a financial impact on, on this, on this.
No.
We don't?
No.
You sure?
Yep.
Positively.
Okay. No, that's right, Title IX. Discussion. We've got a second.
You have a second?
Yes.
Yeah, I seconded.
Yes.
With regard to this, I explained it, basically what it involves to people when, or reported back to the policy subcommittee. There were changes that were made from the federal government that indicated that all districts must adopt changes to Title IX. And they're basically changes on how sexual discrimination and harassment are defined. In particular, we almost become a political hot button issue. So I did ask at that meeting what our lawyers felt with regard to some of those issues. I do have Caroline's response, but if you want, we can certainly ask Ms. Rapore if she wants to give us her response as well.
Would you speak into the mic, please? Thank you. Is it on? No.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So my understanding of the issue was whether these changes could open up conversations about use of locker rooms and bathrooms. Am I right about what the concern was? And although the amendments to Title IX could lead to lawsuits and in fact have led to efforts nationwide to shut down these regulations, the particular revisions to the policy don't have that potential because the policy is really a policy that's guiding a, a process for assessing complaints by individuals in the school department or who are either employees or students in the school department who are alleging that a particular person, not the institution itself, but a particular person, has engaged in conduct which could be discriminatory on the basis of sex. So issues around bathrooms, locker rooms, whether students who are transgender are going to be permitted to play a sport are really policy decisions that the school district makes and about which individuals may complain by filing a lawsuit in court. But this process is an administrative process that is designed to essentially adjudicate whether somebody has misbehaved in a way that's discriminatory. So it, it involves individual complaints against other students, against a faculty member who may have done something that could be possibly either sex harassment or some other form of sex discrimination. And that process has been, through these regulations, made a little bit, not a lot, but a little bit easier for districts to manage. So a little more user-friendly, a little more streamlined, gives a little more opportunity for those who investigate to make a judgment about yes or no. So it's really helpful to adopt this slightly streamlined process. And then Caroline in particular, but I as well, will continue to help Dr. Holt make sense of whether a particular complaint is worthy or strong enough to be put through that somewhat difficult or more time-consuming process. A lot of these complaints are bullying or student misconduct complaints, but when something serious bubbles up, we'll be able to help guide you in the process, which is really designed to put a stop to whatever's going on and impose some consequences so that the school district remains safe and welcoming for all kids and adults. So I hope that answers the question. I don't know if it does.
Ms. Kapiskas?
I believe it does. I just wanted to clarify for, because I know there's been some, it's, the issue's been politicized with regard to Title IX. Basically, the, the changes that occurred to Title IX were mostly procedural. The only thing that was substantive with regard to a transgender policy is defining discrimination based on sex to include gender identity. That's really the only change that would impact transgender-wise in terms of dragging groups in. But again, Title IX is an investigation of one person's allegations against another. The only way the district would be susceptible to suit under Title IX is if we totally disregard Title IX and just ignore it. In fact, one of the cases that's been cited by one of the proponents of this particular viewpoint, which was recently dismissed, by the way, in Virginia, made those exact allegations. The only reason he could allege anything against the district is because they ignored what was actually a Title IX complaint. That's not what happens here. We have a process. In fact, under this new process, we now have two investigators as opposed to just one. Dr. Holt investigates complaints with regard to students, and Ms. Kitchen investigates complaints with regard to staff, which is logical because she's the HR director. So basically, what, the, the changes that we made to the policy are mostly procedural. And again, to make it easier to conduct an investigation, change some of the timelines, change the process, not real substantive changes. And again, just, I just wanted to touch on the transgender thing because it's just become such a political issue, and it's really not related to this, no matter how people might want to try to fit the square peg in the round hole. That's not how it works.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, though, next we have a discussion on the education department's procedures in providing assistance for the district homeless student population. And the reason I wanted to put this on the agenda is I wanted to have a discussion so the public could hear, basically in response to an article that appeared in One Socket called "A Call in Times" on October 14th, that said homeless students in city schools almost doubled in the last two years. And frankly, when you look at, and the numbers they gave for the current numbers were actually the prior year numbers. So the numbers that were actually down as of, as, as of the 14th of October. As a matter of fact, two years ago, the numbers were like 214. In '22, in '23, '24, they were up to 276. And then they were down to about 116 at the time. And I've asked Dr. Holt to put together the procedures that we follow in our district to help and assist our homeless students. Dr. Holt?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you so much for bringing this up at the school community. It's a very important issue in our city and actually across the country, homelessness is, it is on the rise in, in the country. I will say that since the report that you had received, our numbers have gone up. In the first couple of months of school, we tend to be getting more families coming and talking to us, and we have identified more students who are, that meet the criteria for the federal law of McKinney-Vento. So McKinney-Vento Act is an act that helps to protect our students who are experiencing temporary housing or transient housing. It can include multiple definitions, one of which is living doubled up because of the loss of income or financial instability. The reason that indicator is included is they don't have secure housing. It could be that they're staying at a friend's house, and they get into an argument, and that night they need to leave. So they don't have a right to the home, they don't have a lease, and they could be asked to leave at any moment's notice. As it stands today, I just pulled the report this afternoon, and we are at 210 students who have been identified for this school year that are protected under McKinney-Vento. This number is for students who live in One Socket and are identified. We also, as a district, help support students who are identified from other communities and are staying in One Socket. So for instance, if we have a family that was originally from Cumberland but is now living in the shelter here in One Socket, they're identified by Cumberland as a McKinney-Vento student, but we assist, the One Socket Education Department assists with the students' transportation. So we cost-share transportation. You had asked me to list some of the things that we have done for our students who experience homelessness. The biggest barrier for our students with homelessness is transportation, ensuring that the students are able to get to school, to and from school, every single day from wherever they're living, whether it's within the city limits or it's outside the city. So we have Durham that helps support some of our students who live here in the city. They can transport our students, so if they're staying at the Holiday Inn, over the One Socket Motor Inn, or their shelter, we ensure that the students have transportation. We also, like I said before, cost-share for students across the, the state. And sometimes we actually cost-share with districts in Massachusetts. We have some families right now who are staying at a hotel in Milford. We've had some families that stay at the hotel in North Attaboo. And one of the things under the McKinney-Vento grant is we want to ensure continuity for the students in some capacity, really in education. We don't want them to have another disruption in their life, so that's why the transportation is so important, so they don't have to transfer from here to go to another school, to go to another school. We want to keep schooling consistent. Another thing that we do is supplies and materials for our students. This actually is a big piece of the work that we do. We've received many grants, either through the ESSO grants. We received about $170,000 with the ESSO grants. And every year, I apply for a competitive McKinney-Vento grant. And this year, I'm really excited to let you know that we were our, the total. And this year, I'm really excited to let you know that we were, the total for the grant has gone up by 20,000. So we're gonna be getting about $65,000 this year for the McKinney, competitive McKinney-Vinto grant. That grant allows us to purchase school materials and supplies, clothing, hats, mittens, backpacks, and toiletries and things so that the students are able to come to school ready to go. We also, Ms. Blaze works with some of our local organizations, and they do a birthday in a bag. It's really important to keep normalcy for our students. And having a birthday is a really big thing for our young children. And that birthday in the bag allows them to have some presents, a cake, a gift certificate for pizza, and it helps to continue that normalcy that some of our students who are experiencing homelessness may not have in their day-to-day life. We provide food. It had been in the past that we had a strong relationship with Sodexo, and we have the backpack program. And every Friday, our students would receive, we say backpack program, but it was actually in a plastic bag. But now, this summer, we actually purchase backpacks and send them out to the schools. So it's actually a backpack program. And we're in the process of working with Chatwells, thank you. Process of working with Chatwells to get that back up and running. For instance, in the past, Harris Elementary School had had about 60 backpacks that were going home, or bags, every Friday for students who needed some continuity of food. We also received gift cogs that we'll end up giving out to families for local, like Stop &amp; Shop, or Walmart, so that they can purchase food through that. We have some significant community partners that we have been collaborating with. The last two years, I've been working with the Boys and Girls Club through our competitive McKinney-Vinto grant and offering the students who live in our shelter, in One Socket, membership to the Boys and Girls Club. So they have a paid membership to the Boys and Girls Club for the full school year calendar. And also tutoring that's happening at the Boys and Girls Club. So a One Socket educator is going to the club three days a week and providing tutoring. There was a summer program as well, where she continued and tutoring with the students during the summer. That program had originally been housed at the shelter, but the shelter is so full, they no longer have the space for us to be able to do that tutoring program in the shelter. So we had a look and think, who could we partner with? Boys and Girls Club stepped up. They have a van, so they go pick up our students from the shelter, bring them to the club, and then bring them home in the evening. They also provide snacks for the students while they're there. I'm excited to let you know that our new grant, because we got more money, and we were able to extend the McKinney-Vinto offerings and have a program at the high school. So our students who are experiencing homelessness in the high school will be able to participate in, I think it's called "club." I don't remember the name of the after-school program that CCF is running, I apologize. But our students will be there three days a week, and we'll have tutoring. And then, it's like a wellness club, and they get to play games and whatnot. So we'll have staff that's gonna be supporting them there. And there's a late bus that will be taking them home from there. Yeah, so we're pretty busy in the office, working and supporting our McKinney-Vinto students. It is... It's tough for families to reach out and ask for assistance. So we try to make sure that we let everyone know what's going on. We inform the schools. And our social workers have been pivotal in helping us to reach out to the families. As you can imagine, some families are concerned that if they let us know that they're living in unsecure housing, or some of our families are living on the bike path. As you can imagine, letting us know that they're living there is a concern for them. We do not, we're here to support and assist. And that is not something that, you know, we don't report that to DCIF as a neglect. It's just their living circumstance. The one thing that we're unable to do is to help with, provide connections to other organizations. But we don't have the ability to house any of our students. It's just not something that's in our purview. And the last thing that I'll mention is, one of our biggest concerns is for students who are over 18 and are not staying with adults. So they're unoccupied, unaccompanied, or maybe they've had some concerns and they've been asked to leave their home, or they've left their home voluntarily. They're 18, and they're still homeless, they have no place to go. It's hard for us to assist. The mayor's office had assisted us last year with a student who fell into this category. But as you may know, if you're not, I think it's 25, you can't rent a hotel room. But at 18, they can no longer qualify for some of the other services that is provided. So they're in that, like, catch-22 space. And providing supports to students at our high school who fall into that category is pretty difficult. But the mayor's office has been assisting us with, it's not very many, but the students, it does impact, it's very traumatic. So, you know, it's very helpful from having the mayor's office assist. But yeah, so we provide as many opportunities for support for our families so that they continue to have access to school and some sort of normalcy in their life when they're living in these conditions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? There's nothing to vote for, but I wanted to bring this out and make sure we talk about this because I know we were doing, we're doing quite a bit in terms of making sure the education is handled, transportation's handled. And there are other services. The Rotary Club, in addition to Birthday in a Bag, we have the Closet at the corner of Clinton and Main Street that's called "Just for You." I know the Elks is involved with coats. The Knights of Columbus are gonna be bringing a lot of coats. So there's a lot of opportunity to get materiel, to get clothes, especially as the winter comes in. Because the winter coats are gonna be, Knights have just ordered a ton of them just for that purpose of all sizes, for all ages. So it's something hopefully our homeless and some of our poor can take advantage of.
Mr. Chairman, just...
Vice Chair Burke.
At our last Health and Wellness Subcommittee meeting, we did encourage Chatwells to do a better job with backpacks.
That's good to hear. Last, any other, any other items, any other comments, questions? Last item on our agenda is I'll make a motion to discuss and approve a filing of fiscal impact statement with RIDE for proposed charter's charter expansions. Colin, New England Tech Academy, Red Island Cultural Academy, charter school. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa and Mr. Leclerc. This is the one that we need fiscal impact statements. Thank you. I'm glad you nodded. Since we don't have that, I want to make a motion to table this item till our next regular school committee meeting. And this way, we'll, sure, we'll have the fiscal impacts for these items. And we'll have a discussion, will we be able to approve it or not? Do we have a...
Second.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Costa. Any questions, comments on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
It says a discussion approval of filing a fiscal impact. So really, this is asking us, should we file one, or should we not file one? And if we decide to file one, then we would get the fiscal impact. But I think the concern that Ms. Kepiscus has is that these charter schools are open all across the state.
Yep.
And we should have some say, possibly. So I don't, I don't, I don't think we're asking to have a fiscal impact right now. We're asking to file, possibly should we file one? Am I correct?
I don't disagree. We don't usually see the fiscal impact statement prior to filing it. I think what we're just, basically what I was hoping to have is, I guess, preapproval. Basically directing Mr. Perrier to prepare and then file the fiscal impact statement with RIDE when it was prepared, without necessarily having to come back to us. I don't know if that's something you feel comfortable with. That was my understanding, Mr. Burke. I disagree with that.
I think that's fine. So I mean, we have to make a motion and take it off the table then, correct?
If we're gonna vote for it.
No.
No, we haven't.
There was no vote.
We haven't voted for it.
No vote. It can die right there. So you think we can go ahead without the fiscal impact?
I think that, because we didn't see it the last time we filed the fiscal impact statement for a charter, I think that we just basically, I, I'm just tell you frankly, I keep an eye on this now because I got caught with my pants down once, and that's never gonna happen to me again, as long as I sit here. So I always check the list every time Ride, the Commissioner at Ride, issues her notification of expansion of seats. So as a result, I saw these two and said, we need to file one every single time, even though One Socket is not a target community. That means we're not in the 75% of their anticipated student population. We could still be, they could still be pulling students from One Socket for the other 25%. And I think we need to file a fiscal impact statement, as a matter of course, in any charter that could affect our students. Now, there are other charter expansions on the Commissioner's list that are directed strictly at Providence. And there is no statewide incentive. There's no point for us to file one in those. But if there's a possibility we could have One Socket students, I think we should, as a matter of course. Every time we see them, me or whoever sees it on the Commissioner's report, put it on the agenda to prepare and file a fiscal impact statement. And that's basically what I'm doing.
So since we didn't have any motion, any vote on the table?
Just from procedural-wise, there's still a motion on the table to table it. So someone have to rescind it, I guess, or pull it, pull it back? There's a motion to table it right now.
Yeah, but nobody, we didn't vote, so we can, we can vote and say no.
Pull it, just rescind it?
No, we just can vote no, not to table.
Well, 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 vote on the table.
That makes sense?
Vote on the table.
So you, you moved to table it, but you haven't voted to table it?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
We have a first and second, so you can vote it down.
Why don't you just withdraw the motion?
All right, we'll draw them, we'll draw it.
And talk about it.
What?
Just withdraw the motion.
We did. We withdraw it.
Withdraw the motion to table. Now we're gonna take a vote on...
On the original, yes.
Approval to...
On the, what's your, to table? No, we don't vote on the draw.
There's no vote to draw.
Just withdraw the motion to table it. And if you want to have more discussion about it before you vote, you can do that now.
Now, we want to file, so, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting at 8:27 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned.